And who apparently were represented by Mr. Plunkett. Let me introduce the people on the panel here is Tom Patterson to my far right, Melissa Hartman. My name's Dennis Nelson. This is Peter Von Gunlach. And then at the far end is Michael Norman. The procedure set forth in the agenda, I'm not sure if you've all received that, but we're going to follow that procedure because that's basically what's said in the agenda. Is the representative for, or the Dailies present? What is your name, sir?
Jeffrey Plunkett.
You're Mr. Plunkett and I can see that the city is represented. I would add to the procedure that's set forth in the agenda that this is a quasi judicial proceeding, it's not a trial, it's not a appellate case. But we do have to have the witnesses or who's ever going to be speaking testify, are sworn in. Because it's a public hearing and if it goes to review before the Superior Court, it needs to be, testimony has to be sworn. The other thing I would add is I think the board members should feel free to basically ask questions at any time during the proceedings. It would help us out a lot. So with that, we need to have a summarization of the issues and presentation by the city's staff. Who's that?
That would be me.
All right.
I'm Teresa Coleman.
All right. Can you tell us where we are here and what the issue is that we're going to be deciding?
Yes. So the applicants came forward with plans to add a deck to an existing home that was constructed in the 1980s. The design review board asked that they utilize the battened style of railing.
Pickets.
Pickets, thank you. Style railing in place of the cable railing. That was proposed in the application. So the application was approved with that modification. The applicant wishes to utilize the cable style that they feel is more appropriate for their 1980s style home.
All right. Thank you. And the presentation by the appellate, Mr. Plunkett, would you come forward? Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state your name, spell your last name for the record, please?
Jeffrey Plunkett, P-L-U-N-K-E-T-T, L.A., 51 Wood Canyon.
Very well. Basically state your case, sir.
Okay. I came in to get this thing processed, the DRB application, and, let's see, line one is a 1988 double home. And my only case is that the DRB guidelines on page 14, I think it is, where it states that, anyways.
Page 15.
Page 15.
All right. Well, anyways, it states that you can use materials and styles of the era. And that's it. And that was read, I mean, the way I wrote this, it said that they chose to disregard it and all they, that actually was written by Ben Leckie, or he summarized that rule. And Mr. Conklin disagreed with it and he wanted to basically shut me down or have us agree to do what he wanted to do with the homeowner's property. And that's not what they wanted to do, so it was really important to get this permit. Then I had to go out and call them and tell them that the plan has changed. That's why I'm here now.
The board have any questions? Mr. Plunkett, are you a homeowner or the contractor?
I am, I'm the caretaker at the home and so I'm doing work on the house for them.
Okay. So there's been some talk, is it a wire fence or a...
Yeah, that's my question too. I guess I need a little clarification. Is the issue kind of just one dimensional as to whether it's a picket or the wire fence?
The actual handrail would be just like a regular handrail. Instead of having, you know, you'd have a wire rail system which is, in this case, a stainless steel cable.
Okay.
Nice and clean looking.
Because this is a second story deck, correct?
Second story deck.
Okay.
And you have the drawing, my original drawing, it actually has more, it actually has more post than your original drawing because I had to to get the permit. And so it was within the, you know, the 1988, they had it then. And I did go down and enter that one, and you know, we don't feel, the Dailies and I don't feel that any concessions should have to be made when something adheres to the guidelines. And so that's why, there's $75 in my time and all of your time, and whatever the city had to do to get this going brought us here.
Was there any other fencing on the property at that time? I realized the deck wasn't there, but.
The neighbors have fences out back. The neighbors have a fence on the side.
And what's it made of?
That's, I think it's wood. I mean, I know it's wood, I'm trying to think of, I don't know what kind of wood it is.
All right. Other questions?
It's everything lost too.
Yeah, this question for Joe Ward. So Joe, the proposed handrail, the cable rail, any issues in terms of, does it meet the building code requirements in terms of safety?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So there's no...
It's considered, it's kind of an Alvart Bard system that's used all over the country.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, get on the record that it's not a structural issue, it's, this is what we're talking about.
For the record, Joe Ward, you're the building inspector?
I am.
One more question. And this property is nonconforming or conforming?
Non-contributing.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. This is a non-contributing property.
Interesting. Does anything, any further questions from the board?
So the structure's built, the original structure's built 1950?
Eighty-eight.
1988.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, so the eighty years.
Yeah, it's showing the side letters, it says nineteen fifty.
Further questions?
Yeah, I guess so. So, Mr. Plunkett, did the, does the review board offer any further direction in terms of using vertical pickets, in terms of...
Basically, I was going to get, I was going to get tabled if I didn't agree. That's why I say I don't think we need to make concessions. Because the permit couldn't go through until I got this DRB thing processed. We came in, we feel it adhered to the guidelines, we're going to say it.
Does the, does the house, whereas it was originally built, did it meet guidelines at that time?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of that?
When the house was originally built, 1988, did it meet the historical guidelines at that time or was it built as kind of a non-conforming property?
I just know it was a new build home in 1988.
Well, but if it didn't meet historical guidelines, matching, matching the way it was built is just adding insult to injury.
It was, it was, it was basically made totally not like any house around here. Mr. Sky said he'd rather have the house moved to Flagstaff, is that? Because, you know, that's just his opinion. A lot of people didn't like the house because they didn't think it fit that. So I'm guessing that it was not built to any kind of historical...
Well, you know, what is the, if they build a house, if they make any changes to it, doesn't it have to...
I have a picture of the front of the house, if you'd like to see it. Oh, you have that?
We have it.
But I would think if something was built in non-compliance, if at a later date they wanted to amend or remodel the property, they would no longer be grandfathered in though. That's true.
I'll just go by the fervor of the guidelines, it said that, the one argument that makes it.
Well, I think that's assuming that the property that's being renovated or remodeled met the guidelines in the first place. If you build a house that doesn't meet the historic guidelines and no one seems to call you on it.
No one did.
Okay. Then it's kind of grandfathered.
Oh, okay, yes.
What will happen then if you make a change to that house, now all of a sudden you can come up to the sta, have to be brought up to the standards of the historic guidelines again. You know, that's why you don't see them making any changes to the circle. So we're talking making an adjustment to a non-conforming property.
Well, it's also in that yard, we can't see it from the front and there's nothing but hills behind it.
Mr. Chair, I can just, I think we need to be careful with the word we're using. This is a non-conforming property. It met the permit requirements and it was built, it's a non-contributing property because it's not a historic structure and that it was built in 1988. It's not necessarily a non-conforming use. I'm assuming it had a permit and went through whatever design review process was in place at the time, which...
If any.
Yeah, if any. But it's, I wouldn't use the word non-conforming, it's non-contributing.
That's a good point.
In the sort of value of it.
Yes, sir. Peter had a question too.
I read the material at the second meeting and it seemed like there was a, the discussion was centered around whether or not the fence should be vertical or horizontal. I mean, and of course the wired fence, the stainless steel cable fence would be horizontal. While the people in the design review board objected to the fact that it was horizontal rather than vertical because they talked about buildings or older buildings having ten-foot high ceilings and so forth. And I'm sure this house didn't meet any of those requirements either. To me, my question is aside from the fact that, that the guidelines here seem to validate the decision of the current owners, inasmuch as there would be no reason to add on to an existing building that was contemporary in that, at that time, and put a veneer of historicity on an existing building that has nothing to do with this. So, but the main issue I see here is the question of the fact that the general guidelines indicate that the owner is within a reasonable, how would you say, following the rules of that, of that particular guideline. Now, if the, and I'm just throwing this out as a separate item, if the owner decided instead of having the stainless steel wire horizontal, instead had it vertical, would that change anything?
Well, we didn't talk about that.
But I mean...
That wouldn't, that would be kind of, that would be a lot of work. You have to, it would, they don't really, I've never seen it that way, I've only seen it horizontally, I can see them.
Yeah, I'm just saying that again, the argument was horizontal versus vertical because that was the only issue that was really brought up for the discussion that I couldn't understand anyway.
Well, from what I read in the guidelines, when they came up with, you know, because you have a lot of clavars with pickets.
Right.
This house actually has vertical on the siding, so that would be opposite. But, you know, it would look, it's going to look better because it's going to have redwood and then it's going to be an awning and there's going to be a ton of redwood on there and they're going to have to boil all that redwood and they're going to have to get the lower measures of the wires. The only part you can see it, like I was saying, is when you look at the one picture, you see the top of the stairwell coming down from the road and it's, I paced it before I came here, it's about eight feet from the road. The little bit, you wouldn't even see the wires from that far, you'd just see through them.
Well, I can understand the reason for the wire as well, but not just aesthetically because I would be, I'm a minimalist in terms of design and construction, so that would be a problem for me personally. Question that I'm seeing also is that the wire fence permits a much cleaner view of the whole area below. I mean, the less material doing more was less to me would be a much better way of looking at a situation like that.
Yes, and actually when I came in before, we were willing to make a concession to put the pickets on the staircase just because even though we didn't feel we needed to make a concession, but we needed to get it through. But that was an outlet, it was my way or the highway.
Other questions? Staff have anything that wish to add to the substance of the appeal?
I do not.
Okay.
Mr. Sky, you seconded the...
Wait, wait, we need to have him sit down, Mr. Sky come up and be sworn in before he answers your questions. Are you going to be speaking for the DRB, Mr. Sky?
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state your name and spell your last name, please?
John Sky, S-K-Y. I'm currently on the design review board and we have, I attended the meeting for this.
All right. Well, I noticed that you seconded the motion to approve the application with the deviation to the pickets.
I did.
What was your thinking on that?
We've actually dealt with the vertical wire question numerous times. It seems to be frowned upon because we don't want to set precedents in the historic district, even though I know the house doesn't meet historic guidelines and I don't know how all that went back then. But as a board, I believe they don't want to start letting some people do it because then the neighbors want to do it. And it's, and I read that, when I read that from the historic guidelines handbook, what he's presented to you, I catch a way different meaning to that. And it says that it's a concern. And you'll see that right in the top line, it says it's a concern. And that's also a concern for us and we, we're pretty strict about railings and handrails and, and actually we're trying to become more strict on these things. That's why we're about to go through that handbook and then make some changes. Yes, sir?
Well, my question is then, your concern seems to be that this sets a precedence then for other people who have historic buildings that would be putting wire, well, this was another historic building, this is a contemporary building. And if they don't qualify as a contemporary building, there's no reason to be concerned about future violations or taking advantage of some sort of ambiguity in this particular guideline, which is obvious to almost anybody who reads it.
Yes. The, and I, as I agree with, and I know where you're coming from on that, another reason why it got shut down is because something that we hear a lot is, well, it's on the backside of the house, you can't see it, so we just want to do what we want to do. And this happens with windows and doors and stuff like that. So that's another thing that the board took into consideration that night is, and that sets another precedence that, that we're trying to condemn. And yet, the house, it definitely, if it went through the histol, the design review board today, that house would not have been built. So we're not trying to add to that. And I'm not speaking for everybody, but me myself. And I'm trying to stay consistent with what my predecessor kind of ran me through, Ken Budge, on his thinking of the vertical wire and stuff like that, so.
You mean horizontal?
The horizontal wire, I'm sorry.
And what if it were vertical, it would be okay?
No. I mean, not for me, I would, I would definitely give it a negative vote. The reason for the wire, it's, it's, it's not for visual, it's, well, it is for visual. So when you're on the porch, you can see.
Right.
When you're sitting down and you're not looking at pickets, that's the sole reason for it. It's not, and granted it has the added bonus of, you know, you don't have to Lincet oil it or Thompson's water seal it or whatever means you use to treat your deck, but...
There were no issues with safety of this, the wire? That, that, I mean, I just, I want to make sure, did the design review board talk about the safety of this type of fencing at all?
Well, we didn't talk about it, that would be a code issue and that would be up to Mr. Ward and obviously you do in building myself, there's nothing wrong with it as far, as long as you do it every four inches, so a baby's head can't fit through there and so on and so forth. So I don't think it's a code issue as much as just a precedence issue and trying to remain consistent in what we approve or deny, then that's all.
And I understand that, but that, that's a tough thing in Bisbee. When, this is a perfect example of a non-contributing dwelling, who knows when it was built, what happened? And again, to kind of go back to what you said, trying to insert and overlay those, those items over it, that's, you know, that's tough, that's tough. And what I would hate to see is any homeowner that wanted to improve their home be subject to more costs and more things, I want them to follow the rules, don't get me wrong, but I don't want it to cost them randomly 10,000 more.
I don't think cost is one of the things that we're supposed to be looking at. If you have, if you have a house that didn't conform with the neighborhood when it was built.
Yeah.
However it got built, that doesn't mean, okay, we got this house up there, so now we can do anything we want.
Oh, that is not what I said.
Well, but no, I'm saying, cost, even if what we require is exorbitant in cost, if it meets the guidelines, that's the way it is. But it seems the argument is this house did, was non-conforming.
Contributing.
Contributing, whatever, but it didn't conform to the rules. So now, because it didn't conform to the rules then, it doesn't have to conform to the rules now. And you can do anything you want with it. And where would that stop?
Except that I think that we have provisions for exceptions in these rules.
If I, if I might, and that's something, another thing that we run into a lot on the board. It's more, it's definitely more expensive to keep things along the historic guidelines and people say that all the time. They're like, well, it's going to cost me a lot more to put in double hung windows as to put the sliders that are off the shelf at Home Depot. We're like, well, that, that's not a part of what we do. And then the other thing that I think you'll need to, just think about this, what we're supposed to be paying attention to is aesthetics. So when you look at the house and what, when you look at the deck that they want to put on this, and just try to picture this. So you're going to see a big empty square, right? Because there's going to be wires that you really can't see. As opposed to seeing nice pickets that come and tie the house together. And that's another thing, you know, we're not, we're not supposed to worry about codes or anything like that. The only thing that we're supposed to worry about is how it's going to look from the street view. So that's another thing that we take into consideration when we make our votes.
Mr. Sky, is that you're concerned with how it looks from the street view, but the deck is on the back of the house, not visible from the street?
And then we get back to the same thing where we have to remain consistent in the front and the back because then the next thing you know, we're approving slider windows in the back and then we're okay with the double hungs in the front and then they start getting, you see where I'm going with that?
Oh, yeah.
So we have to, the windows that are in the books that we're supposed to approve every time and deny the other ones, then we're doing this front to back thing. Well, then that opens up a whole nother thing. So we're trying to keep consistency in the board and that's why...
Set precedents.
That's why we are currently trying to get together, it's been tough for our board, to revise what you have there. I don't know if you have the whole books, but, and you'll see, it goes through fencing, walls, et cetera, et cetera. So that's it.
Further questions by the board? Thank you, Mr. Sky.
Great.
If you have anything further, is there anyone else to speak for the DRB?
I can get up and say something.
Come over to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir.
Raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Tom Conklin, C-O-N-K-L-A-N.
Okay. Tell us what you want to tell us.
I just kind of want to reiterate on what Mr. Sky, Mr. Sky was saying. I just, what I, the reason why I got onto the designer review board is I want to make positive changes in Old Bisbee. And what I, I think what the board doesn't want to see is we will have 10 houses that are all of historic value, whether they're contributing or non-contributing. And then you have one house that, you know, could be anywhere in the country. So it's bad precedence, I think, for other people that are going to be working on their houses that are going to be putting applications, if, you know, the neighbor is being able to do what they want to do. And I also feel that the DRB and your board and Board of Adjustments should be working closer together because I think sometimes stuff can fall through the cracks. And that's the reason why me and Mr. Sky are here today, so that maybe we could build a better relationship with you guys as far as, I think what the board is expecting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have any questions?
We are down our chair right now, so we're kind of in limbo with members, but in the meantime, you know, me and John came in on our time here today just to kind of express the feelings of the board, so I really hope that you take this into consideration.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else to speak for the DRB? Mr.?
Joe Ward.
Joe.
Joe Ward, W-A-R-D.
All right.
Do you swear?
Why not? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You state your name, spell your last name.
Joe Ward, W-A-R-D.
Okay, Mr. Ward, what's your position on this?
I was listening to these, these things that were being said. And I want you guys to understand that non-contributing homes, very many of them in the district are able to become contributing by, by being brought closer and closer to the standards. Well, Mr. Plunkett's example is, is an extreme example of, and there was no residential district when that house was built, that's why it was allowed, but the residential historic district. But there is, that there's other contributing homes that would, that house is never going to be contributing, but the precedence is that a non-contributing home can become contributing and we're, and the city, we try to encourage that. We don't want, John said that it's from the street, it's not really just from the street only. We don't want that Disneyland standard of it looks like this on the front, it looks like a warehouse on the back or, or a modern house on the back. But the, that would be considered an intrusion. So I want you guys to understand that while it does, it does say that in the design standards, what Mr. Plunkett said, and that's good evidence, you know, kept towards his, what he would like. But also understand that the design standards of the Bisbee Historic District, which is where that comes from, it drives its authority from the zoning code. So the zoning code has precedence over that and the zoning code does say that no non-contributing building or structure may be added on or altered in any way unless the proposed addition or alteration will bring the whole to a higher degree of conformity with the design components of the district. But now, that, it may not matter so much on this house, but it will on other houses by setting that precedent, it's going to matter that we didn't take them further away from, from the standards of which they can be distributed. And that's what I just wanted to highlight.
Let me ask, is it more likely that someone wants to alter their home in some way that they're going to look at the city code or look at the design review guidelines?
I think that the guidelines should be much closer to what that, the zoning code is, but they're going to look at the design guidelines.
They seem to be inconsistent with what you indicated with the city code.
What then?
The guidelines don't seem to be consistent with what you said.
I agree, I agree, that's, and I, I agree 100% with you, that they need to be revised.
While they're rewriting them.
Yeah, it does say, no non-conforming building or structure may be added to or altered in any way unless the proposed addition or alteration will bring the whole to a higher degree of conformity with design components of the district. So the idea is even if you got a house that doesn't fit, if you put a picket, if you use the pickets, it's going to look closer to its neighbors than if it didn't. And if you, throughout the community, if you hold that standard, everything assumed will be more in conformance with the way we want our neighbors to look.
In Old Bisbee. DRB is for Old Bisbee.
Right. Is this in Old Bisbee?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Anyone else have further questions? All right, let's see where I'm at. Mr. Plunkett, this is your opportunity to read up to anything you came forward, I'm assuming there's no further comments from the other side.
No, sir.
You're still under oath, sir?
I'm under oath. So anyways, like I said before, you know, we were going in willing to go with pickets where you could see them, but now we're not because we're all here and everything's here. And the minority of the DRB is going to shut me down and the minority's the only people that are here today. The rest of them, they're not, so, so anyways, just sticking to the letter of the rules that I have and if they're revising stuff, it's not revised as of yet. And if you're going to let some people tell homeowners what they can do with their home with their own decisions, the rules haven't been made yet, then that's the way it is and I'll have to accept that and that's it.
All right, thank you. I assume we don't have comments from the public? Cynthia Jim? All right, then let's move along to the discussion of the issues among the board members and us being public. Basically, I view our duty as to either grant or deny the appeal. If we grant the appeal, then we would, the, the wire fencing would be allowed. And if we deny the appeal, then it would not be allowed. Are there any comments? Anyone want to discuss this?
Well...
Ross, comments? I think, I appreciate the concern about setting precedent and preserving historic aesthetic in Old Bisbee. But I want to go with the facts that we're dealing with. Uh, the house was built in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, is a non-contributing property. I don't think we can assume that it's non-conforming in any way, it's non-contributing historically, but it was an approved structure at the time. The proposed design for the horizontal cables as a handrail are consistent with the aesthetic for a house built in the late eighties. It's, it's, meets code requirements in terms of safety and structure. And, uh, yeah, so I think based on that, oh, and the other thing is because the current design guidelines say that on page fifteen, as was pointed out, another renovation concern is that you want to keep the materials and design consistent with the era that the structure was built in. So this house was built in the late eighties, I think the design was proposed by the homeowner is consistent with that. It's, it's an unpleasant aesthetic. So I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the appeal, approve the appeal.
Who's second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, let me go have further discussions. Is it, anyone else have something to say?
Yeah, I, I really think that if we can make even a home like this look more like the homes in the area, that it just makes the whole neighborhood and the whole community look better. And I don't know what the difference is cost is from one to the other. Nobody brought that forth as evidence. They just said it costs a lot more, but I, I can't imagine that it would be excessive. But that's how I feel. That's the way I approach my home.
Other comments? Let me say that what I'm looking at here is what the person, a, a member of the general public looks at when he wants to alter his home. He looks at the design review guidelines, basically. And the guidelines are quite clear, that if your home, basically, even though it's non-contributing, was built at a certain time, you could have a non-contributing addition to it even though it doesn't meet the historical guidelines. I think if we were, I'm in favor frankly of granting the appeal, and I'll tell you why. Not only because of the inconsistency, but if we denied the appeal, I don't think the guidelines are gonna be changed. I think the guidelines need to be changed. And that basically the DRB just needs to follow the guidelines rather than what the, the members of the DRB feel about it. So it's, an opportunity here, it feels like it probably, the appeal's gonna be granted. What I'm sensing is that the DRB then, the members of that could ask the city to alter the guidelines as to what you, you think would be appropriate and the city council then could enact whatever is necessary for that. Are there any further comments or questions?
Just one, um, I think there are a few of us that'd be willing to work with the DRB as they begin to do this because what we keep getting is the aftermath of this and having to make a difficult decision. So perhaps being in the loop a little earlier while we're making new considerations, I'd be willing, I'm sure there's others.
It's in the works. It's on our agenda.
If there's nothing further, all in favor of the motion, engage itself by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right, the motion passes forward. The appeal is granted. Mr. Plunkett, you may ask us to talk with, with the city regarding what your next step is here, so...
Oh, I'm building.
Yeah, well, I think, I don't know if anything further needs to be done, but I can check with the city.
Thank you very much.
All right. If, nothing further, meaning to adjourn.
So, we can speak off the record now, right?
Uh, hang on, just a minute.